Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our public hearing today on the budget. And honorable members of City Council, in accordance with Virginia Beach Code 2-21, and the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, I call for a special formal session of the Virginia Beach City Council today, Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025, at 6:00 p.m., City Council Chambers, Building One, Second Floor, 2401 Courthouse Drive. The purpose of this special formal session is to conduct a public hearing regarding the proposed tax increase in real estate tax levied resulting from increases in annual assessments. If you wish to make comments during the meeting, please follow the two-step process below. Register with WebEx here. Register with the city clerk's office by calling 757-385-4303 prior to 5:00 p.m. This special formal session will be broadcast on cable TV, virginbeach.gov, and Facebook Live. Citizens are encouraged to submit their comments to City Council prior to the special formal session via email at citycouncil@vb.gov.com. Okay, I believe we're ready to go.
Thank you, Mayor. The first speaker is Max Gonano, and then Mike Hashamie.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, Madam Vice Mayor, honorable members of council. My name is Max Gonano, and I am president of Virginia Beach Professional Fire and EMS, which represents 600 full-time employees across the Fire and EMS departments. I am speaking to you tonight on two matters. First, I wanted to speak in support of the proposed market salary adjustments. The city study showed that out of all the city's workforce, the group most behind the market was public safety, and within public safety, the job titles that lagged the most were firefighters. Moving forward with this is a critical step to ensure we at least try and keep pace with the market. Maintaining the ability to recruit and retain quality employees is critical to the safety of the community and the workforce. Second, I wanted to urge you to implement the proposed fix regarding the flex leave holiday pay issue that was discussed during your April 15th council briefing. Quite frankly, I don't think that council should have to deal with this level of minutia within the organization. This issue, respectfully to the city manager, should have been identified and addressed by city staff ahead of time. However, since this problem predates anyone in this room, we understand how we got here, but we need your intervention now. As you saw from many emails on the subject, the way holidays are calculated for firefighters is done completely differently than anyone else in public safety or the city. For the rest of the city, holidays are valued at eight hours for eight-hour shift employees, 10 hours for 10-hour shift employees, and 12 hours for 12-hour shift employees. But firefighters who work 16 hours of a day, that's 8:00 a.m. to midnight, get 11.2 hours at an hourly rate that is 28% less than anyone else making the same base salary. This means that holidays for firefighters are valued less than anyone else despite working 40% more hours. This is wrong and inconsistent with council's policy of parity and equality within the public safety workforce. We didn't ask for the city to do away with flex leave and implement the new holidays, but it's happening. And because it's happening, this disparity that has been around for decades has reached fever pitch. As far as the price tag goes, it only demonstrates how much money the city has saved by undervaluing holidays for firefighters all these years. You know what the right thing to do is. Please revalue firefighter holidays to 16 hours to maintain parity and equality with the rest of the city. Thank you.
The next speaker is Mike Hashamie. After Mr. Hashamie is Edward Mary.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. So I just want to kind of go more onto like a macro, general level of what's going on with the budget, because I'm concerned about some things that are going to be happening this year. One, it looks like we may be entering a recession, so I hope that council will consider what's going on with the economic factors. And particularly here, I'm worried about boycotts around with Canadian tourism, and then, of course, with the recession affecting tourism for those who are United States citizens in Northeast and Midwest, wherever they're coming from. So I hope that we'll consider these, because I do believe that these are going to be huge factors coming into this year, so thank you.
Thank you for coming.
The next speaker is Edward Mary. Edward Mary. John Moss. After Mr. Moss is Amber Koska.
Honorable mayor and members of City Council. Groupthink is a noun that means a pattern characterized by self-deception, also a trait of addicts, forced manufactured consensus, and conformity to values and ethics. You probably have heard of the Albo- Alboene paradox. It certainly illustrates that term. The proposed budget is a product of groupthink. Eleven council members, individuals, self-deception, disconnected from the reality of what bosses your residents can afford, fused by the city manager into his interpretation of the consensus, has led to incompetent guidance and a budget that no fiduciary agent would responsibly produce. Now, if you do adopt the 12-step process, which starts by admitting that you're addicted to higher taxes and fees, you can break groupthink. Your groupthink is destructive to the financial health of beach residents and businesses. Just do the following as a second step of recovery. Adopt a real estate tax rate of 90 cents. Adopt a meal tax of 10 cents. Keep the freeze on the stormwater management fee as you promised. Make no change in the boat tax. Eliminate the $15 million Mayor's Committee Trust on page 27, which is the executive summary, which is a tenfold increase over last year, which is a slush fund for individual allocation to council members for spending in their districts. Provide no funds for pay raises for council or assistance. No pay raise for council appointees. Sacrifice starts at the top. Stop reducing the personal living standards of the people for whom your duty is to preserve their liberty, their wealth, and their income. Stop robbing people of hope by excessive taxes. May God soften your heart, instill with you the courage, and impart you the wisdom so you may conquer your addiction to do what is right by the people. Let families keep more of what they earn by reducing the scope and cost of government. Spending is your problem, not insufficient revenue. Thank you.
The next speaker is Amber Koska. And then Brandon Goodrich.
Good evening.
Thank you, guys. My name is Amber Koska, and I'm here to speak about the proposed restaurant meal tax increase. I appreciate you all taking the time to listen to your constituents tonight. I'm a local restaurant employee and co-owner of a small business called The Stockpot. We've been in business for almost 10 years down at the oceanfront. I'm also a mother of three, and I do the finances for our household, so I know when things get tight in our household, the first thing to go is, for us, is going out to eat. I mention this because according to the National Restaurant Association, restaurant sales declined 1.5% in January and February, and while they jumped back up a small amount in March, the majority of that is due to menu price increases. Food prices are up 10% year-over-year and 3.5% since the beginning of 2020 and '05. Our personal business average food costs went up 2.5% in quarter one, so slightly less than the average, but it's a lot when your sales are down 6%, even with menu price And that's something we're forced to do, not something we want to do, trust me. The Consumer Confidence Index is at its lowest level since January of 2021. Restaurants are not, for the faint of heart, and the majority of us are not in this business for large profitability. Our restaurant nets 5% on a good year. That's on a good year. With this proposed increase, the City of Virginia Beach will be making more off the restaurant than we will. On top of that, we are also forced to pay the credit card fees on top of the taxes required to collect. So we collect taxes on behalf of the city and behalf of the state, and we pay credit card fees when people pay with a credit card. And we are forced to pay that fee, a higher percentage fee, to collect those taxes. I'm proud of our business and the benefits we currently offer, like health insurance coverage, paid time off for all of our employees, paid maternity leave in an IRA match. We'd love to continue to expand our benefits, pay rates, and provide further support for our staff. However, we need business to do this, and we need more business walking in the door, not less. If a restaurant brought you over a dish that you didn't order, you would send it back, and the voters did not order this tax. The restaurant industry is still struggling from COVID, and we will continue to without the support of our elected officials. Please consider other avenues for the funding you need, and I do understand that there's funding needs. Like, one of my best friends is in education. I understand there. I understand. But this is a struggling industry. I welcome your feedback and your conversation on this at any time, and I would love to have you at our restaurant. I would love to talk to any of you about this. I would love to show you my P and L. I advocate for just a more robust discussion about it.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate you coming.
I appreciate you. Appreciate your time.
The next speaker is Brandon Goodrich. And after Mr. Goodrich is Neil Jeffries.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Fellow public servant here, as well as yourselves, third-generation City of Virginia Beach citizen here since the beginning. I'm here to talk a little bit about the struggles that the Waste Management Department faces across the board, from drivers to mechanics and helpers and other individuals that perform labor amongst everyone that works with us. It seems that we deal a lot with expectations of what people think that we should be able to do versus the reality of things. And the reality is that the fleet that we have is overused, overstressed, and it becomes even more difficult to maintain that fleet when it is used to the capacity that it's destined to with the magnitude of the populace of the city. So with that, we have a very limited amount of people, drivers and everything like that as it is, and that mainly reflects that the salaries and such do not reflect the expectations in respect to the expectations of what, everything that needs to be done. So what I believe needs to be, needs to happen is that the salaries need to be increased to reflect the desire to want to come and work with those facilities while it may not be desirable on the outside to most. We are the only mechanic shop with a night shift because we are unable to perform preventative maintenance during the day because the fleet itself operates at 100% magnitude full-time during the week, during the day. And so, and we are very limited into our abilities to maintain that fleet and keep things going at 100% magnitude, let alone being provided with enough drivers to do so. Couple other things. I think that the boot stipend that we get should probably be doubled. The things that we go through, buying one pair of boots a year, it's not going to cut it. And stipend payments to repay us for tools and boots needs to be a bit more efficient. It's a little lackluster, but I urge you to just consider these things, and I appreciate all your time. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Neil Jeffries. After Mr. Jeffries is Jim Servera.
Good evening.
Good evening again, mayor, council, fellow citizens. Becoming a regular habit, it's nice to see you. If you look on the website for the Virginia Beach Public Library, it states that it is a place for blending of knowledge and community. That's a hallmark of the system. It was reflected in the 2022 survey of the public. Strong, strong results for the library. Things have changed a little bit. Before you, for consideration, is a proposed budget that the director from the library system has provided you and placed you, the council, in a bad situation. Choice A, plus up the library budget, which in effect makes the director a little bit more important as she is presenting herself to organizations and other groups. Or B, keep the proposed budget, and five people, five good people, five long-term employees of the city lose their jobs. And let's not be fooled. Those people aren't being relocated within the city government. There are not comparable positions with comparable pay. They're going to get cut. Now, is there a third option? I'd like to think so. Third option is send it back. Send it back so that the director, her leadership team, which includes the building managers and the BSCs, the supervisors, if you will, who were not allowed to have an effective voice the first time around, their voice was squished, let them have a voice. Let them have an input into what ought to be in that budget, which positions, empty positions, less valued positions, or better yet, what other options there might be within that budget, so that you're not forced to plus the budget and you're not forced to cut good people. The style of the director has caused issues in the morale of the staff, and after the budget is settled, after this is out of the way, I urge you, with the manager, city, to look at that and have some consideration, because this is not the way that we treat people. Thank you very much. Oh, library's corner. Please, sir.
The next speaker is Jim Servera, and then Michael Sheen.
Welcome, Jim.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Ms. Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Duhaney. I'm here to talk about two topics, and we're going to start with a positive topic. How's that for something that's totally different when people come before council? You have fully funded Park After Dark again this year, and I want to commend you for that. You know I can go on for an hour about how important it is, from a community policing standpoint, to give young folks positive things to do during the summer so they're not going in other directions, and we can really discuss that. I would hope that that project becomes something that's embedded in our city from this point forward. So you'll probably see me again next year, but thank you for looking at that, and thanks Parks and Recs for bringing that whole topic up. I'd also like to talk about some of our capital improvement projects that we're looking at this year. In reading things, I know that we, as one comment was made, we are at a plateau for taxes, and that inflation has eaten away at certain of our adjustments that we want to make towards capital improvement. And so you, I still think I'm part of the city, now you have looked at certain things and said, we have to defer certain projects, one of which is Feral Parkway Road Project, the other one is Burton Station. Now, I use Feral Parkway to Indian River Road, and I do want you to know that it does cause great agitation sometimes in going in that particular direction. But as a citizen, I wholeheartedly understand and support that maybe we need to push that a little bit further down the road to find a funding. Having that said, I'd also like us to look at some of our other projects, two of which will have emotional standpoints for some folks. One is the Trail Project, and I know that we've accepted federal funding on the Trail Project, so Mr. Stiles and Mr. Duhaney, you may look at this and say, no, we have to go forward with this particular phase because we've accepted the money. That's understandable. But if there's any way to take that project and Rudy Loop and say, let's just defer it for another six months until we see what the economy is going to be. You know, today the stock market hit 1,000. Great. Yesterday, it lost 1,000. We're down about 4,000 from a month ago from where we were at its top, and we don't know what's going to happen from this point forward. All I'm saying is to be prudent, to look at this as I am looking at it with making some adjustments to my house. Can we take some of our lower priority projects and maybe push them out another year? Still say we're going to do them, still have the funding coming in, but it might take us another year, and I think that would be the prudent thing to do. Having that said, I'm open for questions. I didn't think so.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate you coming.
The next speaker is Michelle Sheen. Scott Miller. And after Mr. Miller is Diana Howard.
Honorable mayor, vice mayor, and members of council, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. More importantly, thank you for your leadership and commitment to the long-term prosperity of our city. We've already submitted written comments, but allow me to underscore the position of Virginia Beach Vision and our 130 business leaders who represent a broad cross-section of the business community. We are united by a shared purpose to support policies that ensure Virginia Beach remains a thriving coastal community with an exceptional quality of life. We commend the city manager and his team for producing a balanced and strategic budget. We especially appreciate the inclusion of several pro-business initiatives, demonstrating a commitment to growing our economy while modernizing how we fund and manage the growth. This budget cycle, however, arrives amid significant economic uncertainty. At the national level, concerns persist over fiscal instability, unsolved spending debates, and the potential for federal shutdowns. Given our regional dependence on tourism, defense, and federal contracting, the impact of Washington's volatility is very real here at home. International economic pressures are compounding these challenges. Tariffs and trade disruptions are already being felt by local employers engaged in global commerce. Despite these headwinds, the proposed fiscal year 26 budget preserves critical city services and operating levels. Still, we remain concerned about the pace of progress on infrastructure, school modernization, and transportation improvements. Delays in major road projects and the school replacements are not due to a lack of planning. They reflect an underlying structural funding challenge that must be addressed. As we look to the future, we must not only ask how much we grow, but also where and how we grow. The solution is not sprawl. It's in protecting rural open space while investing in walkable, mixed-use, strategically redeveloped urban centers. This approach is both fiscally responsible and economically smart. We applaud efforts to maintain fiscal discipline. Over the past four years, the city has reduced the real estate tax by nearly 9 cents while expanding important tax relief programs. Though a tax rate adjustment may not be appropriate in fiscal year 26, a broader conversation about long-term revenue sustainability is needed. In closing, Virginia Beach Vision supports adoption of the proposed budget with minimal adjustments. We urge City Council to maintain a stable, pro-business environment while working toward long-term financial resilience and smart growth for the city. I thank you.
Hey, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Diana Howard. After Ms. Howard is Stephen Shapiro.
Hey, Dee, how you doing?
I'm good. How are you doing? I'm Diana Howard, and I'm here speaking on behalf of the Virginia Beach Tea Party, and of course, we oppose the tax increases. We just had Kevin Chatalera at our last meeting, and he presented the budget for us, and he answered all of our questions, even some that we didn't have time for. He sent us the answers. So I appreciate him coming. So he's not here for me to thank him, but I thank him. So I agree with him. A dollar doesn't equal a dollar anymore, and, you know, in these uncertain times and with the increase in inflation, I can't believe that you are burdening us more with tax and fee increases. It seems unconscionable to me that you would do that. And one of the other things is that you're getting more money. I looked at the assessors' reports and everything, where have 1,200 new residential housing, 143 more businesses, including Amazon. Aren't they all paying taxes? So you're getting an increase there, where because everything is inflated, we're paying more taxes on everything. So personal property tax is up 8.8%. Sales tax is up 7.61%. The restaurant tax is up 14.38%. The amusement tax is up 17.72%. I mean, these are all increased taxes that you're already getting, and there are many others, business licenses, et cetera, et cetera. All of those are increasing. So, I mean, I noticed that there are things that you, like, deferred in CIP and things that you eliminated in the CIP, but you also added a dozen new projects. It doesn't seem right. I mean, you should be, like, maintaining your current level of spending, making sure you, you know, fund city services, and not increase the budget with all of these unnecessary things. What in the world is the city council priorities of 1.85 cents? We did, we elect you to fund your priorities. Your priorities should be maintaining city services and not increasing taxes. What are you spending that on? Right? The flooding referendum, this always bothers me, to keep saying that you're absorbing the tax increase for that. Okay, so the flooding referendum was in 2021. In 2022, we had a 9.2 cent tax increase. Okay? Tax increase. When you raise our assessments, you're increasing our taxes. So in that 9.2% tax increase, we put 4.1 cent of the real estate tax towards flooding. It is not being absorbed every year. It is not an annual increase. You are increasing taxes every year. In fact, I can't remember when you ever put taxes down to a revenue-neutral rate as required to do, right? Ever. I mean, you've reduced it and raised it 2 cents here, but...
Thanks for coming.
Next speaker is Stephen Shapiro, and then Michael Sims.
Good evening.
Good evening, mayor and City Council members. My name is Steve Shapiro, and I'm again speaking in support of our library staff and in strong opposition to the city manager's budget that will cost five full-time employees their livelihood. I spoke last week on the same topic, and I listened as Public Works employees asked for raises, and numerous citizens spoke out on the boat tax. I hope you find the money for the raises and a solution to the boat tax, but I want to talk about the five dedicated library employees who will lose their jobs if you approve the approved, the proposed budget. It's easy to look at this from a 30,000-foot perspective, especially when you're dealing with the size of the proposed budget, but I'd like to humanize this story for you. Let me tell you about one of the branch services coordinators that your library director wants to eliminate. She has worked for the Virginia Beach library system for many years, loved her job, the staff she worked with, and the community she came to know. In an effort to better herself and grow within the department she loved, she applied for and was selected as a branch services coordinator. Now she finds herself on the list of positions to be eliminated through no fault of her own. Had she remained in her former position and not tried to get ahead, she would still have a career to look forward to. Is this the message that we want to send to our Virginia Beach employee family? There's enough turmoil and uncertainty coming from Washington, DC these days, with many of our relatives, friends, and neighbors losing their jobs. Please don't add to this upheaval on the local level. To restore the five positions will take approximately $590,000. If you subtract the $219,000 that the library director has increased her administrative line item by, you're left with $371,000 needed. This is 1/100 of 1% of your $2.8 billion budget. I feel certain that you can find that. Please send the message that employees matter and the job they do matters. These targeted positions are the paraprofessionals in the library who train staff, work with the community, and are the public face of our library system. You heard last week from more than one speaker how the morale in the library department is abysmal. Restoring these positions will go a long way in letting the employees know that they're valued. However, you still have a huge problem in the library system, and these targeted eliminations are just a symptom of a lack of effective leadership at the department head level. Employees are now scared to death, waiting for the next shoe to fall. I mentioned last week that the library system is one of the highest-scoring city services when the community is surveyed. Do not let the library... Do not let the library director damage the good work that is built over the years by her proposed staff rotations and position eliminations that make absolutely no sense. Please do not accept the city manager's proposed library budget, and please restore these five positions. For those in the audience who support my comments-
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it, Jerry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Michael Sims. Michael Sims. J.B. Moss. Or Mass. J.B. Mass. I may be saying that totally wrong. Sorry. Moss. Had it right the first time. And then Melissa Peck will be after Mr. Moss.
Good evening.
Honorable mayor and city council, for those of you that I don't already know, my name is J.B. Moss, lifelong resident, Virginia Beach. We're talking Tramwood Elementary, Lynnhaven Middle, Cox High School, and Virginia Wesleyan. I've never left. Recently appointed to the Bay Advisory Commission and a long-term restaurateur. My businesses, and I'm here to speak out against the meals tax increase. My businesses in fiscal year 2024 provided over $1 million. We collect over $1 million in meals tax. 300 residents I currently employ in the city of Virginia Beach. As you note, the city of Virginia Beach is one of the 50 biggest cities in the United States. We have the highest meals tax on the list by far, and when combined with general tax, only Chicago and Minneapolis tax the residents more for prepared meals. I've indicated this in letters to all of you. Some responses, I've been told that we're the lowest in the region, as if this apples-to-oranges comparison is relevant, as if using Norfolk and Newport News as our city's guiding light would be a good idea. I've been told it's only a quarter increase on a $50 check. This kind of financial illiteracy would be laughable if it weren't so dangerous. At scale, it becomes a large sum of money, a sum of money our residents don't want to pay in taxes, but that our struggling operators would love to collect for themselves. You see, when the check shows up on the table, the guest holds us accountable for the total, not the city council. You already take 11.5%, and now you want more. It's not just restaurateurs and diners being affected. This is a family running into Harris Teeter to get meals because they're trying to get their kids to practice. Bang, 11.5%. To frame the increase of this is necessary for public safety, comes right out of the Politics 101 handbook. You guys are afforded budgetary advantages that nobody in this region comes close to receiving, and many of the other large cities don't have them either. An oceanfront full of hotels, sky-high property values, and the military stabilizes our economy. $2.5 to $3 billion should be able to handle this. And in closing, quote from you guys, when this budget was released, the city itself says tax revenue from the restaurant meals tax has grown 13.5% per year over the past three years on average, significantly, and I quote, significantly outperformed the historic average of 4.5%. For those doing the math, that's a 200% growth. After these numbers, why do you need more from my industry? Frankly, we should be discussing how far we can lower the meals tax, not the idea of raising it. That is preposterous. Thank you for your time and for your service.
Thanks for coming.
The next speaker is Melissa Peck. After Ms. Peck is Robin Friedman.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Melissa Peck. I'm a District One resident and public librarian. Thank you for this opportunity to advocate for the restoration of the four branch services coordinator positions in libraries. Public libraries are one of the few government institutions that the general public still trusts and appreciates. When you think of a public library, I imagine you think of a brick-and-mortar building where your family can go to receive materials and assistance for free. Daily, our public libraries remain the one true space that is open to everyone. Libraries offer free Wi-Fi, free study space, on-demand tech help, advanced technology appointments, countless programs for all ages, a place for our community members to feel less isolated, and are so much more than just books and periodicals. Branch staff conduct outreach to schools, preschools, senior living facilities, community events, and underserved neighborhoods. Every day, branch staff answer questions on every topic imaginable while also conducting the more mundane tasks of checking out books and issuing new library cards. To remove four out of the nine library branch service coordinators will have a negative impact on staff's ability to continue to offer all of the above services and programs to the community at the high level Virginia Beach has come to expect. Library staff is already spread so thin. While not police or social workers, library staff often work hand-in-hand with these city staff to ensure the needs of our community are met. The branch services coordinators are senior managers in our branches overseeing staff, offering training, and ensuring city policies and procedures are followed. Additionally, some spend over 50% of their day on public service points, providing direct customer service. If removed from libraries, their duties will fall on the shoulders of others, and something will have to give. Reducing branch staff will lead to slower service, difficulty in fulfilling patron requests, fewer programs for youth and adults, and fewer resource referrals. And I've had one heck of a day today at work, and I am here to personally advocate for the branch services coordinator in my branch because she is the absolute backbone and the support to our staff, and I honestly can say I do not know how we would do without these professionals. I strongly encourage you to restore the four branch service coordinator positions to the library budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Monica Curry, and then Holly Martier. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I apologize. Ms. Freeman, I'll call you next. I'm sorry.
I can wait, ma'am.
No, it's fine. Go ahead.
Good evening.
Good evening, honorable mayor, man, Val, and the city council. Please excuse my voice. I'm here today. When I think of budget and when I think of money, my mind automatically goes to a wise saying that says the wealth of the wicked is stored up for the righteous. When I think of money, I think of a phrase that says a fool and his money will soon part. Again, my name is Monica Curry. I am the owner of Jim Refuge Services. Jim stands for my daughter Goddess, my son Elijah, and Monica, Refuge Services. And I'm a nonprofit organization, so I'm not really concerned about your taxes because God provides for all of my clients. My issue with the budget is we need to be more careful when we just give this money to any and everyone. Me being a Levitical high priestess, proud to tell you guys that I am from the tribe of Levi. I have a double portion. My mother is from the tribe of Izikor. So to everyone who's talking about a red heifer or the Jews looking for the wall, Christ already here. My blood is Jesus Christ. Me and my children are the last living descendants in this heritage. So I want us to be careful. These churches, if you know Revelation, the seven candlesticks are all false prophets. So y'all are giving grants and money to these churches. They show up for reset walks when someone is murdered in our streets, and we don't see them again maybe Sunday, passing out old, expired food lying about to go on the trash food like they're doing us a service. They're leading our community. They're having our children pray to Allah. Everyone has the right to pray to who they want, but if we say in God we trust, if we stand on the foundations of the word of God, I should have a right to pray to my God. My issues that police officers, firefighters, these people are risking their lives with these hooligans and the violence in the streets. That's where the budget needs to go. The budget needs to go to my services. We need to defund her husband, Aaron Ruth, who lied and scandalized my name. Mayor, honorable mayor, I spent three months in psychotic hospitals and jail because of her husband's slanderous lies when I have done nothing but to try to bring peace and love to this community, not just Virginia Beach. I'm from the beach. But because of the abuse I suffered as a sex slave, I ran away from Lynnhaven Middle because my brother made me a sex slave since I was four years old. So I am asking that when you guys come up with extra money, let me get it. Bless the real people of God. We need to defund corruption. I have reached out to her and her husband repeatedly. I don't care if I never, I know you guys say statute of limitation, I shouldn't have pled guilty. Three months? You want to get home to your family, too. I begged my judge. I begged my lawyer. I said they are lying. My friend, I thought Pharrell was my friend. You look at my records, my charges of shooting up Sea King Hotel. Transporting cocaine was for my so-called friend, Pharrell Williams.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Thanks for coming.
I am the people of God.
Robin Freeman, I apologize, Ms. Freeman, for skipping over you. After Ms. Friedman is Holly Martier.
Hello. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Robin Friedman, and I've lived in the Salem area since 1984, and I've been here since 1982. Recently, I had the opportunity to participate in a public session where residents of Virginia Beach were asked to provide input that will be used to help form the public library's five-year strategic plan. These 20 or so community members spent that weekday evening discussing what they love about our public libraries and what they would like to see more of in our libraries. Would you be surprised to learn that not one resident suggested we reduce branch programs, services, or materials? I imagine you are not. Instead, what this vibrant mix of community members did was share their enthusiasm with each other about current library offerings, listings, countless programs and services they have taken advantage of themselves or are pleased their fellow community members can access. Then everyone began listing even more new services and programs they would like to see in our libraries over the next few years because libraries serve the entire community for free. This inspiring evening is why I am here tonight. I implore you to reconsider cutting any library branch staff. Library staff members are already stretched so thin as their city continues to demand they provide services and resources beyond what many traditionally expect to find in a public library. In fact, I attended a Virginia Beach library program this morning, which was a walk-through the vibe district where we learned more about the murals and the artists who painted them. This program is offered every other Tuesday and was very well-attended. To suggest that library staff can continue to offer current levels of customer service and hours while losing branch staff is unreasonable. Investment in our libraries is a sound investment in our entire community. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
The next speaker is Holly Martier, and then Alfred McLennan.
Hey, good evening.
Hi, ma'am. How are you? Okay, thank you for letting me speak, city council. I'm here, basically, I bet you the majority of the citizens in Virginia Beach would agree with me. I'm sure we're all sick of the high fees from the water bill. My water's like $12. My bill's like $100. I think we should do it. I've suggested a budget so many times, and I think somebody just threw it out, you know, how to do, instead of charging a person with one person in a house or two, why do I have to pay for five people? I don't think it's right. And we're all sick of the fees. It should be based on how many people in the household. And I'm sure, and I'm sickened by the city, you know, charging so much, and then you want to raise taxes? That's kind of disgraceful. I don't know if you pocket any or what, but it's just sickening, you know, because I can't afford it. I could barely afford my mortgage now. So I figure you'll be hurting the citizens of Virginia Beach, especially the ones that can't afford it. If you actually care about us, you won't raise the taxes as much. As long as, and there's a surplus in funds, I found out. You do not need our money. No more contractors. You just hire people to build and build and build, and there goes our money. You know, it's ridiculous. Stop increasing taxes and the fees. It's a turnoff from people moving here. I actually personally told my friends from where I'm from not to move to Virginia Beach. I said, if you want to come to this area, go to Chesapeake or Norfolk. You know, it'd be nice to have them here, but they found somewhere where I'm from. So they're not even going to move here. I told them, I've had it with the raising of fees and taxes. I mean, I got the water bill the other day, and I'm like, this is ridiculous. You know, one, two people in the house, it's ridiculous. I don't even take the garbage out every month either. I mean, every week. And if you want to raise them, you could pay the difference because I don't have it to do. And whoever raises taxes, you lose my vote. That's it.
Good. Thank you for coming.
The next speaker is Alfred McLennan. After Mr. McLennan is Craig Leonard.
Good evening.
Good evening, mayor, city council. I'm just getting me a podium and just stay here. You guys see me so much. But I'm here because the things that I'm discussing, they are very urgent, as a young man stated. When I was before you the last time, and I spoke to you about the market survey, the market surveys, to me, is like polling. They're not accurate. I mean, it's just, it's a blanket sheet. And I stated before that we are the city of Virginia Beach, and we need to do our best. We don't have to look to a market. We're able to set the market. We have to be the standard. That's who we have to be. We have to be the standard. I want to pick up kind of where we left off. Bottom line, we need you all's help. The job is getting done, but at what expense? We're losing people at an alarming rate, far too many accidents, not to mention five rollovers within about three months. You guys, I'm quite sure you're not even aware of this. These guys are undertrained and simply logging too many hours behind the wheel. Now you talk about distracting, driving, being fatigued. In fact, when I was before you last Wednesday, I think LJ had to leave because one of our drivers, 6 o'clock in the evening, was still on the road. That's unacceptable. But we're talking about budget. He had a five-car accident when he should have been home with his family. The fact of the matter, he was at fault, but they were all at blame. That being said, please understand, this is not about greed, but being able to operate at an efficient level, thereby creating a safer work environment which leads to a desired productivity. No one can make a fair assessment of any operation until it is adequately staffed. Investing the money will eventually save us money. Proper training will lead to less accidents and truck repairs and injuries and so forth. But we need the manpower. We are understaffed by 20 to 30 men. This is a labor-intensive job. Bodies need to be present. A typical automated lifespan of automated truck is eight years. For our trucks, five years. Their packing cylinders are going up two to three times in one year. That's unacceptable. It's unheard of. I recommend that every GS status be elevated by three under 19, two over 19. I believe this would solve our hiring and retaining issue while handcuffing our competitors, making us more attractive. Now, I know attractive and trash aren't synonymous, unless you remember what I said when we began this journey, that trash is what we do, it's not who we are. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Craig Leonard, and then Ashley Liskowski.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I stopped to bring some groceries on the way in. I want to talk to you about the meals tax. My family and I operate a couple of restaurants down the beach, and so I look at this from a couple of perspectives. I was fortunate enough to take 14 people of my family to a great dinner at Town Center for Easter. 14 people. I felt like I had two of you there because when I got the meals tax attached to the bill, I felt like I was buying a couple of you dinner, but you weren't there, and I didn't get a thank-you note, so I felt a little left out. You know, when people pay their meals tax, like you do, like I do when I go out to eat, whether it's a fast-food restaurant or fine dining, you look at the total bill. You don't look and blame each and every one of you for that meals tax. You blame the restaurant for how large that bill has gotten. And then when you put a tip on it to thank that person who's waited you, waited on you and served you and done such a great job, between that and the tax you're putting, a 30% or more entitlement on top of that check, it's just gotten outrageous. You know, Mr. Moss did a great job. He was talking to you, and he shared with you the fact that we're the third-highest big city for charging meals tax in the country. I don't want to be known for that. I want people to come here and enjoy our restaurants, our hotels, come to the beaches, go to the other- go to the other events that are in the city. I don't want to be known as the third-highest meals tax in the city, in the country, I'm sorry. You know, inflation has devastated this industry that I'm in, the restaurant industry this past year. There's been more foreclosures, more bankruptcies, more closings in big chains, little restaurants across the U.S. than there has ever been in the history. It's getting worse. The costs are getting higher, the food costs are getting higher, the cost of labor, if you can find it, is getting higher. And as that price is passed on to that guest, they're looking and saying, "Ooh, I can't afford to eat out as often anymore." That food away from home expense is growing and growing and growing, and it's sending people back to the grocery stores. At the end of the day, you got to eat. And so I did too. I said, I went to my local Harris Teeter and said, "Well, what are they going to charge me for a tax? If I sell that bottle of orange juice, I have to send 11 and 1/2% to you." Harris Teeter charged me 1%. And then I said, "Well, I'm really thirsty because I worked all day, and I'll have my Diet Coke that I collected 11 and 1/2% tax for for you, but Harris Teeter charged me 1%." And then I said, "I should eat better than I do. I should lose a little weight." And I said, "Well, what if they had a salad completely ready-made, just like a restaurant anybody in the industry might make, ready-made with a dressing in it? What would they charge for the tax on that?" 1%.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate you coming.
The next speaker is Ashley Siskowski, and then Bobby Gribble.
Good evening.
Good evening, City Council and citizens of Virginia Beach. Thank you for your time. I am here to speak about the library budget cuts that have taken place. As someone who was born and raised in Virginia Beach, and I have been a user of libraries here since, before I can even remember, since I was an infant. The only, libraries are one of the only places left that welcomes absolutely everyone without any discrimination, without any bias towards age, race, gender. And there are opportunities for everyone, from early literacy and psychological development with programs for youth to programs for teens and giving them a safe space for all people. There are teen and young adult activities that educate and provide interaction and connection among peers, so teens have somewhere to go. They have a place to go, they can read and educate themselves instead of getting into trouble and doing other activities, which is a big concern for teens, especially in this day and age after COVID. Teens and young adults especially need somewhere to go, as do all, people of all ages. People who are homeless have a place to go, a place to have resources and educate themselves. It provides equal opportunity for everyone and just somewhere that our future community leaders are able to connect and grow. Personally, I also volunteered in libraries. When I was a teen, I was able to assist with the summer setting goals for what used to be our summer reading challenge, their summer reading challenge, and providing resources for students, those pursuing education, who are also going to be our future community leaders. It's a place to continue to learn, receive accessible help and resources, including those who are retired or visually impaired. There are audiobooks and resources specifically for those groups as well. And libraries are essential. And with cutting the budget and removing some of the most important staff members, some of the backbone, those who make it possible for libraries to provide these programs, cutting that budget is going to severely impact the ability to provide those resources and streamline customer service. So I urge you to reconsider the budget before it is finalized and reconsider these budget cuts that have been proposed. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
The next speaker is Bobby Gribble. After Ms. Gribble is Georgia Jean.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Bobby Gribble, and I live in Kempsville. And I'm here to talk about two issues concerning our Virginia Beach library, a favorite of tonight's speakers. The first is the Kempsville Area Library, the suggested capital improvement for a family bathroom, and the four library branch service coordinators that are recommended to be cut. Our current and former city council liaisons, Mr. Berlucci, Mr. Hutcheson, and Dr. Ross Hammond, are all aware firsthand about how our area, Kempsville Library, is the busiest library branch in the city. It is equal and only slightly behind the Central Library in terms of the population served, total circulation, and the number of children in the service area. An investment in this facility will impact a substantial portion of city residents. In our opinion, the most important issue that needs to be addressed is no family restroom. The library is heavily used by single parents with young children. When a father needs to take his daughter to the bathroom, his only choice is bringing her to the men's room. Moms take the boys into the women's room, and this creates awkwardness for the children, awkwardness with other adults already in the restroom, and issues with other patrons who see them go in and feel they need to wait to enter until the children have left. We need a family restroom. In addition, as you've heard, four of the 10 library branch service coordinators are projected to be cut. Currently, library branch service coordinators supervise at each location, forge relationships with the public, and they're a huge part of the library's branch success. I'd ask you not to cut these four positions. If there still needs to be cut positions, I would suggest a study be made of the administrative office, which is not public-facing. In that way, these important positions that serve the community directly will be saved. We love our libraries and our librarians that serve us. Thank you all for all the time you're putting into creating a budget. It's a tough job, I know. You are appreciated.
Thank you, so are you.
The next speaker is Georgia Jean, and then Mike, Michael Mouch.
Good evening. I'm here to ask that you fund the $60,000 request from Cultural Arts and the Department of History Museums to plan for the four-and-a-quarter-acre lot that's adjacent to the Thoreau House that we purchased with green space money for $850,000 Lynn Haven River waterfront 17 years ago, and for which you received a grant, $425,000 retroactively, $100,000 for an acre. It's pretty cheap. The money was given to you because we suspected it had important Native American heritage, Chesapeake Indians, and we have surveyed it, and it does, and that lot was put on the National Register in its own right. And it's the village of Apesas, which is on the White Debray 1590 map from when an expedition came up from the lost colony and visited that village. And it has running bamboo on it. It had a small patch when we bought it, and that's extended 15 feet a year for 17 years. Some of the, those artifacts just aren't trapped in a three-foot sponge-like root system. When bamboo expands, it destroys posthole information, and that's the archaeological information that you got money for to protect, and I think not protecting it is negligence. It's a one-time $60,000 request, and it allows a plan because they can't seek grants without a plan, even if the plan just has an option of doing the kind of underground barrier that protects the spread and saves the rest of the lot. And I want to, I want to tell you about some of the grants we can apply for. For two years, there was a $50,000 archaeological grant from the state. I don't know if that's going to be available. I don't know if it had federal money, but you had to have a city plan in order to apply for it. Three years ago, there was a $40,000 pilot grant to remove invasives, a federal grant that could be renewed two years, $40,000 for a total of $120,000. And National Register properties got priority, and you got extra points if it was for Indian heritage, so we lost $120,000 there. And I'd just point out that we don't want to put green lawn like the house next door. The idea would be that you would heavily plant it with natives, and we would hope to have a viewing platform of the river and maybe a couple of small Chesapeake houses that wouldn't be seen. And I've heard there were concerns about a path, but we have a path that's handicapped accessible from the visitor's center to the house on the three acres now the house sits on, and it's not a problem.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Appreciate you coming.
Okay. Thanks.
The next speaker is Mike Mouch, and then Ashley Barania.
Hey, Mike, good evening. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, City Manager. My name is Michael Mouch, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Virginia Beach Restaurant Association, its members and the thousand restaurants, thousands of restaurants that this city proudly calls home. We understand that crafting a balanced budget is a difficult task. We know you're facing tough decisions, just like families and small businesses across the city are doing every day. I'm here to respectfully ask that you reconsider the proposed increase on the meals tax. While it may consider small on paper, while it may appear small on paper for working families, seniors, and the most vulnerable in our community, it's another financial string. Between groceries, gas, insurance, rent, utilities, it adds up fast. And for single parents who rely on quick, affordable meals or delivery services, it's more than a tax, it's a barrier. Restaurants in Virginia Beach operate on razor-thin margins, as you heard earlier. We're still recovering from the devastation of COVID, and that really hit our industry hard, harder than most. While we're grateful for the city's efforts during that time, the hard truth is many restaurants haven't fully recovered. Many are still barely holding on. I heard the justification that this tax increase would keep us tied for lowest in the region, but Virginia Beach is not just another regional city. We're the 42nd-largest city in America. If we want to make fair comparisons, we should take a look at the top 50 cities nationwide. If this meals tax increase is implemented, Virginia Beach would leapfrog Chicago, Illinois, and become the second-highest meals tax city in the entire United States, just behind Minneapolis, Minnesota by only 0.03%. That would place us higher than Los Angeles, New York City, Washington, D.C., Miami, San Diego, Portland, Detroit, Seattle, and San Francisco. And that's not where we belong. Now, I believe that each of you understand this increase will affect our small businesses, our seniors, our families, and I also believe that you wouldn't be considering this if you didn't think it was absolutely necessary. So instead of just asking you not to raise the meals tax, I want to offer a couple of viable options. One, add a modest additional $1 or $2 room night fee to short-term rentals. This would allow for our visitors, not just our residents, to help fund these special projects. And two, this may take a little bit longer, but advocate for the state, at the state level, to modernize the declining cigarette tax into a broader nicotine tax. This would allow for city, the city to capture revenue from vaping and other alternative nicotine products and reinvest in our public safety and infrastructure needs. Both of these are growing markets, and that could provide a revenue without burdening everyday residents or hurting our own restaurant community. These solutions would ease the burden on families and small businesses while also strengthening the credibility with our credit rating agencies, bond markets, and potential investors in our city, showing that we're growing in smart, sustainable ways. Thank you for your time, your leadership, and your dedication to this amazing city. And thank you for considering alternatives that can support our future without hurting the people that live and work here every day.
Hey, thanks for coming, Mike.
The next speaker is Ashley Barania, and then Wesley Waters.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Ashley Barano. I grew up in Virginia Beach, and I currently live in District 3 with my husband and two children. I've always been passionate about the importance of building community through action, values my nine-year-old son is learning in Scouts. I myself am an active member of the local Junior League of Norfolk, Virginia Beach, whose current focus is children's literacy. This makes me keenly aware of the value of libraries. That's why I was concerned, and I wanted to speak with you all about the fact that for a second year, we are looking at cutting library staff. Libraries and their staff should not be treated as expendable each year in our city budget. Libraries are critical to the creation of strong communities and a thriving city. Libraries are one of the few places that still welcome everyone, no barrier to entry, no paid membership like rec. centers, you don't have to buy a coffee to sit and work like a Starbucks, and on a hot day or a rainy day, they are an indoor option for socializing and connecting. I think about my son as he nears the teenage years and the fact that there are so few spaces welcoming kids and teenagers. We wonder why crime among young people is increasing. Libraries are a place that create dedicated space for teens and invite them with fun opportunities, outlets for creativity. The library staff are making connections with these teens, teaching them job skills and volunteer programs. Our community is facing an epidemic of social isolation and loneliness, and the fact that libraries offer programs for all ages, staff who are a friendly face just to chat about what to read next, that might be the only interaction for some people. This is not to mention the role that libraries already play in supporting early literacy. The single most important time for a child's development is early childhood. All children do not attend preschool, and they may enter school with limited exposure or experience in such environments. Libraries can be an economic equalizer, offering early literacy classes and storytimes. Parents also get the opportunity to meet other parents and feel a moment of connection in the chaos that is raising children in this world. Research has shown that a single intervention in early life, like access to preschool-age education opportunities, can close the gap on school readiness and improve outcomes both cognitively and behaviorally. We should be giving more money to libraries so we can further close the achievement gap, not less. Please stop undervaluing your libraries. The core mission of libraries is one of equal access. They help people to elevate themselves and improve their situation, providing free access to the widest possibly variety of cultural materials, supporting people from all backgrounds and ethnicities. They welcome everyone. I know it's hard to understand the premise of a free service having as much wealth as it does in a market logic that this council follows based on spending, but I'm asking you to think beyond those services that generate income and invest.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming.
I had more time, sir.
I'm sorry, I saw the red light.
That's fine.
The next speaker is Wesley Waters.
... library to learn about city planning.
Wesley Waters, after Mr. Waters, is Sharon Prescott.
Good evening.
Good evening, Council. I'm here to discuss the raise to the meals tax, among other things. So we've been struggling for the last four years, the residents, with the rising, rising cost of everything. It's already so expensive to go to a restaurant, and like other people before me have said, it's, we're one of the highest in the nation of the populous cities. The city spends money on all these things, like we just put out all this money on putting cameras on all these buses. I'm not here to discuss whether that was a wise decision. We spend money on all these things that could be discretionary. The residents of Virginia Beach have had to tighten their belts for the last four years. I don't understand why it's, the city council can't make a decision to tighten your belts, just like we, the citizens, have had to do. I should have brought a paper, but it's just, there's a whole number of things that we spend money on, and some of them should be deemed discretionary. And I think that we should really look at where our priorities are when we're spending our money. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
The next speaker is Sharon Prescott. After Ms. Prescott is Lou Rosario.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer and members of council. I am asking that the city council carefully consider not cutting the recommended reductions in staffing positions from the library's department-proposed FY '25, '26 budget. Our libraries are a crucial resource for families, childrens, teens, and seniors. Library resources are important to facilitate learning and creativity. They help to connect us with our community. Virginia Beach... and creativity. They help to connect us with our community. Virginia Beach should want to continue to be a community of lifelong learners, and we must have access to the resources of our public libraries to be successful in this endeavor. In this time, with family budgets becoming tighter and retirees seeing their savings vanish, this is not the time to reduce or take away access to the resources of our public libraries. And public libraries have to have staffing to make these resources available to their customers. Cutting staff at some libraries will mean reduce hours and possibly reduce the number of days that they are open. It will mean not being able to develop valuable community relationships. Please do not cut staff from our libraries and do not reduce the hours or days of the week that their resources are available to our citizens. Please keep Virginia Beach a community for a lifetime and a community for lifelong learners. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
The next speaker is Lou Rosario. And then Mike Sekulik.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members and residents of Virginia Beach. It's time to stand up to the abuse of the city against homeowners and use of assessments and taxes. We all receive our property assessments, and it seems to go up. Why? So the city can pay unwanted projects. Assessments have been a great tool for the governments to use to acquire revenue. It's also been a tool that's been abused. City officials would give homeowners a perception that assessments is beneficial to them by helping them increase home values. This is just an abuse of its use. Does your home really reflect the assessed value? No. None of the properties represent these values. The city is abusing this form of tax collection. It's that simple. Homeowners are paying the consequences. We must put a stop to the increase in property taxes by use of assessments. Residents of District 4, the highest crime rate district in Virginia Beach, we're still waiting to meet with our council member, Ms. Ross, to discuss the lack of maintenance of a watershed that's causing serious erosion to the homes at this water's edge. Maintenance of this watershed is not even on a schedule. We, the people, are the government. We, the people, must keep our voices heard at these council meetings like today and tell the council members to stop. Stop spending, stop investing in private ventures, and start trimming down expense. It's time to review the ways properties are being assessed in value for purpose of tax collection. In our community at Southmore, Redding Manor, our buildings are in danger of collapse due to erosion. This erosion is due to poor watershed maintenance. So how can our property values keep going up when building keeps on deteriorating due to erosion and improper city maintenance? The properties on Sunny Streets are also in danger of collapsing into the same watershed due to erosion caused by lack of watershed maintenance. Homeowners cannot afford more tax increases on their properties just so the city can spend these taxes on private and government projects that are not beneficial to residential homeowners. Bring homeowners' property taxes down and allow homeowners to live a peaceful life in their homes. It's time to bring the government efficiency to Virginia Beach and seriously audit the city's wasteful spending. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming.
The next speaker is Mike Sekulik. Sorry, I'm probably totally messing that name up. And then Matthew Hicks.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Mike Sekulik. I'm 74 years old. I lived in Virginia Beach for 40-something years. Bought a house when I moved here. I paid off the house. A month ago, I received assessment from the Virginia Beach that my house, it's increased 67% from the year before, and the land is increased 9%. Now, I have two suggestions for you, council, to take in consideration. First, that the single and duplex dwelling property should depreciate for a period of 30 years, straight line. And after 30 years, the dwelling, single-family house, should worth zero. And second, I'd like to recommend you guys to consider the increase, if you do increase, to keep same 9.7% per hundred dollars, but not increase more than that. And the increase should not be more than inflation rate for the previous year, like 2027, 2024 was 2.87%. So the increase should not be more than that, whatever its inflation rate, because everybody's increase, salary increase, is based on inflation rate. That's all I have.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Matthew Hicks. After Mr. Hicks is Brad Belton.
Good evening.
Hey, I'm Matthew Hicks. I live on Sammy Street, and I just wanted to talk about the watershed problem we're having on this canal. I've lived there for 30 years. I've never seen any maintenance done on the canal at all. And I know we've added more schools, rec centers, and houses, and it's all just right into the canal. And some of the neighbors, they're losing their yard, basically going into this canal. It just needs to be addressed. That's all I wanted to say.
Hey, appreciate you coming.
All right, thank you.
What neighborhood do you live in?
Sir, what neighborhood is this?
What neighborhood is this?
I'm sorry. It's Haygood Square.
Okay.
It's Haygood Watershed. I apologize.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Brad Belton. After Mr. Belton is Brad Martin.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. My name is Brad Belton. I'm a waste management operator. June will be 24 years. My brothers and sisters have already talked about money. I'm going to suggest something else, because we know that there's money needed. We know that there's personnel needed. But it seems like money's being left on the table. This is what I mean. Waste management and the city of Virginia Beach, we have our schools, and there's all types of schools. You got all of these new neighborhoods that are coming up, and Virginia Beach does not get that money. Something needs to be done. All of those schools, they have dumpsters and all of these other things. Waste management should be getting that money. Virginia Beach should be taking care of Virginia Beach. All of these neighborhoods that are coming up and private contractors are getting that money for garbage service, needs to stop. I know we can't get it all, but Virginia Beach, waste management, and the city as a whole should be tapping in to those resources as well. Because if we keep talking about raising taxes, everybody's complaining. It hits me threefold. I'm a city employee. I eat in Virginia Beach, and I'm also a homeowner in Virginia Beach. So I'm feeling all of that. Plus, I work here. We need to be going after these excess dollars that we're leaving on the table for somebody else to get. That way, we can do what we need to do. Waste management can get funded, all of these other projects can get funded, and you don't have to necessarily raise our taxes, which we cannot keep affording. Because if you keep taxing us, you're going to tax Virginia Beach right out of homeowners, and then you're not going to have no money to collect. Thank you.
Hey, thanks for coming.
The next speaker is Brad Martin. And after Mr. Martin, Mayor, we have two WebEx speakers that will go to.
Hey, Brad. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor. I'm Brad Martin. A former city manager shared with me a truism that the budget and the revenues will never match. You all have heard a lot about a lot of options, a lot of items, the waste management fleet, library budget and positions, watershed canal management. You all know that I'm interested in smart budgeting and responsible cuts in spending where they can happen. I'm also very sensitive to fixed-income citizen homeowners, as well as the renters and landlords that live in our city. I certainly understand rising home values, but the truth is that the city is falling behind in capital improvement projects, in public school construction, in stormwater referendum projects. We are losing ground. Costs will almost always go up as we delay spending money. And if the financial calamity isn't here now, it will be soon. I don't have to tell you that citizenship in Virginia Beach is a great value with the lowest tax rate in the region. Virginia Beach could raise the tax rate by eight cents and still be the second-lowest rate in the region and still be a great value. An increase of eight cents on a home value of $300,000 is $20 per month to that homeowner and would lead to funding almost $700 million in capital improvement projects. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I'm just here to say that city council and the city management should seriously consider raising more money for the city by raising the real estate tax rate. Thank you so much for everything you do. Appreciate you giving me the time.
Thanks for coming, Brad.
The first WebEx speaker is Brendan Harold. Mr. Harold, you are unmuted and may begin.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight and voice my concerns regarding the proposed budget and tax increases. I'm speaking before you all tonight as a taxpayer who has concerns with the direction our city is heading when it comes to fiscal responsibility. The spending outlined in continuous tax increases and additional fees being added year after year is unsustainable. Over the past two years, I've seen a staggering 35% increase on personal property taxes on my home. On top of that, the cost of living continues to climb. Our electric bills are higher, our water bills are up, trash collection has become more expensive, and groceries are eating deeper into our monthly budgets. And now the city wants to implement another tax increase on recreational boating and taxes on restaurants. A tax on recreational boating unfairly targets a specific group of residents and does nothing to address the core issues at hand. I own a 19-foot boat that is over 25 years old. The ability to fish with my friends and family and my dog in Rudy Inlet and its surrounding waters is one of the many reasons I love calling Virginia Beach my home. As a resident within the resort area, the price of eating out has already increased exponentially in the past few years. These increases have not been reflected in the majority of the residents' salaries, including mine. As previously stated, I have personally stopped eating out as often as I did in the past. It is clear to me that the city does not have a revenue problem as a spending problem. The city continues to approve project after project, many of which extend beyond their original timelines and budgets. I see construction dragging along and costs escalating without accountability. Laskin Road and First Colonial are prime example of construction blunders. Instead of finding more ways to dig deeper into the pockets of hard-working residents, the city should take a hard look at its own books and its proposed budget of $2.8 billion. Where's the money going? Why are all the projects being done at one time? Could any be delayed? Why are residents being punished for the city's inability to manage funds and projects effectively? Virginia Beach relies heavily on tourism dollars. According to recent projections, there will be $90 billion less in foreign tourism spending nationwide. The current spending on large-money projects is not sustainable. I urge you all to carefully consider large expenditures of money and focusing on maintaining what we currently have. I've had to make changes in my spending to increase costs, and I think it's time for the city council to do the same.
Thank you.
The next, or the last speaker on WebEx is Lee Mitchell. Mr. Mitchell, you are unmuted and may begin.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes. Go ahead.
Okay. On April 17th, I sent you an email with a four-page attachment stating why I believe the Town Center SSD surcharge tax on residential property owners should be reduced from 45 cents per hundred to zero. This surcharge tax rate is unjust, unfair, and inequitable. Two years ago, I spoke to council in person at a meeting like this. My topic was real estate taxes. Does legal make them fair? Now I ask, is the Town Center SSD surcharge tax legal? Tonight, I'll address two bullet points of six from my email. Bullet one, validity of the SSD. Virginia State Code 15.2-2403, paragraph one, gives the government power to create and impose taxes in an SSD. But the last line says, "Such services, events, or activities shall not be undertaken for the sole or dominant benefit of any particular individual, business, or other private entity." I believe that Armada Hoffler and their affiliated Town Center Associates LLCs, owners of more than two-thirds of the properties in Town Center, are receiving dominant benefits over all other commercial entities and certainly over the 176 residential owners. The footer of every page on the Armada Hoffler website says, "Town Center, owned and operated by Armada Hoffler." Counsel, I believe it is your duty to investigate my question and obtain a legal ruling, because if the Armada Hoffler Group are not receiving a dominant benefit in the SSD in terms of revenues and earnings, and I don't know the meaning of the words dominant benefit. Bullet two, bifurcation of the Town Center SSD surcharge tax. Stacy Parker's Virginian Pilot article of January 16 stated that city council is studying this, but they're unsure if they have the power to bifurcate or split rates. Paragraph six of the state code deals with taxing in the SSD and concludes with this quote, "However, such tax shall only be levied upon the specific classification of real estate that the local governing body deems to provide governmental services to benefit." There it is. City council does have the power to bifurcate the rate for the residential property owners in the city by deeming that we are not receiving any governmental services that are not available for free to all citizens. We have no opportunity to increase our revenue or earnings like the commercial entities do. In conclusion, I want to clarify, I do not criticize Armada Hoffler for making a profit from Town Center. They've taken a risk and earned a reward. But the Virginia Code does say that there should not be a dominant benefit for any person or entity in the SSD. After two years, it is time for a yes vote on our request based on the law and available funds from the TIF. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, that's all the speakers, sir.
Yeah, Rosemary.
We've had, obviously, a lot of speakers concerned about the libraries tonight. And if you don't mind, Mr. Duhany, I know people are concerned about people losing their jobs. And, you know, I've talked about this, and our cutting back hours or how services are going to be affected. Would you mind, please, addressing this question?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, so the employees will get the opportunity to participate in the employee transition program. Under that program, the city will try its best to put employees in positions that will keep their salary whole, understanding that may not necessarily be a reality. The next step will be to try to find a job that employees be willing to transition into. Should employees not accept that, they'll be given an opportunity to accept severance with the city. We don't project that any of these reductions will result in a reduction in library hours.
And services?
Vice Mayor, we don't anticipate this will have any reduction to library services as well.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you all for coming. We are adjourned.